Everyone, let's call the regular meeting of the Town Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for an invocation. Do we have our representative here? Excellent, sir, come on forward. This is Mr. Doug Schmidt, correct?
Well, substitute Brad Howe.
Brad Howe?
Yes, sir.
All right, come forward to the microphones so we can all hear you. You're also with Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, correct? We'll welcome Mr. Howe.
Thank you. Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for the power of prayer and for a country that believes in me and for all the wonderful things we have, our liberty and our freedom, and the power to make decisions that change the lives of people for good. We ask that this day, as this meeting is underway, that we be inspired to make good decisions and that we keep our integrity and to be honest in all our dealings with our fellow man. And these things we ask for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Howe. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Here.
Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
Councilmember Legay?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickie?
Here.
All right, welcome, everyone. Mayor's report tonight, I get to read the proclamation I shared with the mentoring group here in Fountain Hills that does an amazing job with our students in the school district. You'll hear the details and the numbers, but I know from my mentoring last year, it's just an amazing job and it doesn't take a lot of time, so I encourage everyone with the time and the interest to make that impact and consider mentoring. But it is Mentor Month, so we put together proclamation and presented it to the Fountain Hills mentors and over their breakfast at Sunridge the other day. It reads, "Whereas across the nation mentors steer our youth through challenging times and support their journey into adulthood, and whereas during National Mentoring Month, we honor these important individuals who unlock the potential and nurture the talent of our country, and whereas the dedication of mentors has helped countless young men and women succeed when they might have otherwise fallen short of their full potential, and whereas coaches, community leaders, tutors, and trusted friends are working to mentor today youth to develop tomorrow's leaders, and whereas the contributions of these engaged adults extend beyond the lives that they touch and they have a lasting impact that strengthens our country and our future, and whereas 100 adults are involved in mentoring program in Fountain Hills and 140 children in the Fountain Hills schools are being mentored. I J.T. Schlumpf, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim January 2012 as National Mentoring Month in the Town of Fountain Hills, and on behalf of the Town Council hereby thank all of the mentors who have contributed to the lives of young people in our town." So please thank a mentor and look up mentoring in Fountain Hills if you're interested in participating yourself, you'll find it very, very rewarding. Now, we are fortunate to have another one of our elected officials visiting us here. We have Senator Michelle Reagan from the Arizona State Legislature, who is going to come and speak to us on a variety of topics of interest to Fountain Hills and our residents here and citizens and businesses, and I will invite her to come on up here to the dais and take my seat, and we welcome you, yeah, come on up, and we don't want you to climb over the wall and spend some time with us. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mayor.
And you'll see her adorned in a Fountain Hills pin we gave her, so enjoy.
You'll be proud to know my other Fountain Hills pin is at the Capitol, so I do, I wear it proudly, so thank you for another one. Well, good evening, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for inviting me out here this evening. This is an incredible honor to speak to you and also I'll get to sit in your chair, like it from up here. Don't worry, where'd she go? Linda, don't worry. I don't live here. I am the Chair of the Economic Development Committee in the Senate, and so it's no surprise that I'm working on economic development bills and running economic development legislation. It's also, for any of you that know me, no surprise that I tend to pick very meaty, heavy issues and ones that are not always so easy to get passed. So this year, I'm working on four very, very large economic bills, and every single one of these bills will have a direct positive effect on not just Fountain Hills, but on all cities and towns and especially the small businesses in our cities and towns, and I know you guys have a lot of great small businesses out here. So, not going to get into the specifics, what I did do is bring business cards, and I'd be happy to give you them, and if I say something that sounds interesting to you and you'd like to get into the real meat of the bills, be happy to go over it with you at any time. We are in session right now, so what I did was I brought my personal business cards instead of the ones with the fancy state seal. These have my personal email and phone numbers on them because that's a little quicker way to get ahold of me during session. Downtown, we get about 500 emails a day to our downtown emails, so I will pass these out and I will note, for the people watching on TV, not paid for at government expense. The first bill I'm working on is a sequel to what we called Invest Arizona last year. Invest Arizona was a bill that got passed out of the Senate and the House overwhelmingly with bipartisan support. I'd made one mistake, and that was I guess I didn't go and ask the person that really matters, which is the governor, and it got vetoed, and we were shocked because it had incredible support from, it didn't matter what end of the political spectrum you were on. What did that bill do and what do we hope it does this year? It gave companies an incentive to hire, and the best part about this bill was businesses, we had a model in Arizona up until last year called Enterprise Zones, and your Chamber of Commerce and Frank, they know all about Enterprise Zones, and it was a little upsetting because Enterprise Zones didn't apply in Fountain Hills. Enterprise Zones were set up in areas of the state that are economically depressed, and they were used as a tool to try to create some vitality. Well, it's an outdated model, and we had to get rid of Enterprise Zones, and basically Invest Arizona makes the entire state an Enterprise Zone. So you would get, as a business, large or small, would qualify for these incentives in this bill, no matter whether you were in an economically depressed area outside of town or the county limits, or whether, you know, it didn't matter where you were located, and it also didn't matter what kind of business you were. It didn't matter how big you were. You could be a big company with 500 employees and you could be a little company with, you know, as few as 10 to be able to take part in this program. It was fascinating because it didn't do what I call pick winners and losers. That's one thing that government is accused of doing sometimes, and it didn't do that. And most importantly is it was open to not new businesses, just new businesses that we want to attract here, but to our existing businesses, and that was so very important to me because, as you know, we want to also help our existing businesses to grow and to expand, and they've hung in there with us and they certainly shouldn't be cut out of any jobs creation bill. I will be running that again this year, and I hear the Speaker of the House is going to have some portions of it and perhaps a bill he's running as well, so getting two of them going is better than none, will have double the chances, but do watch for that, that is something that I know your Chamber of Commerce was excited about last year and shared with me how upset they were when that was vetoed. I'm also working on a bill that deals with venture capital. Arizona has a tremendously, a tremendous lack of venture capital being invested in our state and in our businesses. Oddly enough, we have a high amount of venture capitalists in this state, so they are investing money, but they're not investing it in Arizona, and they're investing it in states where there are incentives for them to invest. And if this is implemented, and we follow a federal model that has been very successful, I say that kind of tongue-in-cheek because I don't agree with a lot of the federal things that are out there, but this is a federal program that has been wildly successful. I just spoke with the Senate President in Maine, they implemented it last year, excuse me, and they've seen their, after it passed, they saw their venture capital increase by four times. So, I mean, it's wildly successful, but we would be the only state west of the Mississippi to have this in place. So, a tremendous tool to attract venture capital to our state and most businesses when they're looking at where to relocate or how to grow, they're looking for venture capitalists. And again, like I said, we have, compared to our surrounding states, a very, very low level of venture capital coming in, which is terrible because we have some phenomenal businesses there. I'm also going to be working on, and this is going to sound boring, but it's not, it's called the Net Operating Loss Carry Forward, and although it sounds boring, it is another tremendous tool, and it allows businesses to carry forward their losses. Right now, it currently is five years, and it would be extending that to 20 years. And the reason why is because that, again, is another incentive for businesses to either hire or reinvest that money in assets and capital improvements and expanding their, you know, the equipment that they need or the software that they need. We're finding that that five years is, again, outdated, hasn't been changed in a long time, it's insufficient for some of our businesses. 20 years would allow them to expand, to carry that forward longer and then to use that cash in other areas in helping revitalize the economy and the communities that their businesses are in, very, very little cost to the state, very, very minimal, and consequently to cities as well. So, nothing we need to worry about there that we're going to change something for five to 10 years and it's going to impact the Fountain Hills residents and get pushed off on them in any way. And then probably the largest bill I have ever worked on, and I'm going on my 10th year, and this is by far the largest bill, and it's also the one I'm most passionate about. I have no lobbyists helping me, nobody came to me to run this, I am just running this because I got angry, and I know there's a lot of people in Fountain Hills, I've heard from many of your residents about this issue. I have a real problem with the fact that we have homeowners who have great credit and who are making their payments and are doing all the right things, but they're unable to get refinanced at the current low interest rates because they're underwater. And when they go and they ask for, to refinance at a lower rate, I was so naive, I thought I'm a good customer, they're going to refinance me. Not so. You need to be behind on your payments, that doesn't make sense, and then our state has a Department of Housing, came out with a couple of programs to try to tackle this, but then again, you need to be at least three months behind in your payments to qualify. You also need to be between certain income brackets that are set very low. They also have a program where they'll pay your mortgage if you are unemployed for six months, that's, you know, not a real big incentive for people to go look for work. The people that are holding the bag right now are those people, and I will use myself as an example, that I'm paying every month, I'm doing it because I have a moral obligation, I took a loan, and yet I can't even get refinanced at the current 3.5% interest rate, that I feel I'm owed. You know, my house is underwater, but that's 30% of Arizonans, by the way, Arizona homeowners, excuse me, 30% are underwater and are still continuing to pay every month. It's a huge number of people, and my big fear is that at some point, they're going to say, "Uncle, forget it," because on paper, if you take morals out of it, on paper, it makes completely no sense to continue to pay, and financial planners are advising people to do just that. You don't chase good money after bad. So, this bill is an alternative financing mechanism that connects investors, private investors, to Arizona homeowners who are underwater and helps them refinance with private money. There is no cost to the state, there is no government money, there's no handouts, it's connecting willing investors with willing homeowners who are good credit risks, and we estimate that if we are able to get this implemented, it will be a national model. This is probably the hardest bill I've ever worked on for one because it involves so many formulas and mathematics and derivatives. I've been studying it for about nine months, but more than that is it involves stiff resistance from the banks, who wants competition, right? They have many, many lobbyists, and I guess I can just feel good about my bill because I'm going to call it my own little economic development bill because they're hiring more lobbyists than I've ever seen down at the Capitol to come and kill this. I haven't even introduced it yet, but they are hiring. Anyone in the room who needs a job, contact Bank of America or Wells Fargo or one of the big five, tell them you know me, you'll get a job right away. But, serious, they're putting so much money into stopping this bill that that really tells me I'm on to something, because if they thought this was just crazy hogwash, they wouldn't be investing what they are. I'm also, this is also an issue with the federal government, and I've come to the conclusion that the federal government is not going to help us out of this problem. The gentleman who's in charge of housing at the federal level, DeMarco, he is appointed, he's making policy, setting policy for all the states that affects our home values, affects your home values in Fountain Hills. He's not elected, making policy, and he's unable to be fired, even by President Obama, who appointed him. President can't even fire him. That should be very scary to you. If we're going to fix the problem, we have to find a solution on the state level, and we have to find a solution with private money. In my opinion, that's the only way. There's really no other way to undo some of the damage that's been done, and what we're living in now started 20 years ago, so it didn't happen overnight, but it's going to be up to us to fix it. That's my personal, my personal opinion, so it'll be me, not just against the big bank, but me against Freddie and Fannie too, and so I say, "Bring it on." They did threaten me, they said, "You're not going to win your next election over this," and I will end with saying what I told this particular reporter, is I love my job, but I love my state more, and I plan on living in this state whether I'm elected or not, so I'm going to give it my all, and I think many of you probably in the room will have questions on this bill, and I ask you during session to please reach out to me, I am very accessible, I will try my hardest to get back to you in a very timely fashion, and I thank you very much for inviting me to your beautiful town tonight.
Can we bug you for a picture?
Oh, absolutely.
Bob, would you mind grabbing a shot of us up here with our state elected? How about everybody stand up right here?
Yeah. Last time we had a big gap. Oh, did you?
Thank you again for coming.
Great. Beautiful thing. I definitely don't come out of it. It doesn't look like that.
Yeah, it does look like that.
Thank you, Danny.
You're going to look like the devil. Thank you, Bob.
Oh, really? I haven't been called worse.
Right here.
Okay.
Cover up half my stomach.
Edward, you have your camera.
Oh, you're funny.
I'm sure the Times will send it to you, Bob, or to Edward. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you again, Senator Reagan, for coming to Fountain Hills.
Fantastic, thank you. I'm going to just leave these and...
Yeah, I'll put them on the back table, people grab them on the way out. Thank you again, Senator Reagan, Michelle Reagan, for coming out, and thanks for your service to our state and to us here in Fountain Hills and Scottsdale. Representative, I'm sorry, Senator Reagan has always been accessible, which is appreciated, and she knows that we're accessible if there's any feedback needed coming the other direction, so thank you again for coming out here, and as you may have noticed, we had Congressman Schweikert out here a couple of months ago. We're trying to make it, as it had been in the past, a practice to invite our other regional or state or nationally elected elects to come and visit us and talk to us for a few minutes, and appreciate their coming. All right, on to the next item is call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Move on now to the consent agenda. We've got two items. Item one, consideration of approving Town Council meeting minutes from December 13, 2011, and January 5, 2012, and item two, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Jenny Willigrod, Representative Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, for the purpose of a fundraiser on February 12 from 4:00 to 7:00. Could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dickie?
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Great, thank you. Move on to our regular agenda. Item number three is consideration of extension of the encroachment permit submitted by Carolyn Reddendo, Sephrida O.C., for the purpose of continuing an outdoor seating and dining area located in front of the restaurant, as well as a performance area for flamenco dancers and other entertainment on a public sidewalk at 1648 East Avenue of the Fountains. Bob, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This application by Sephrida's Restaurant, located on the avenue, their current permit expires at the end of this month. The applicant wishes to continue utilizing a portion of this public sidewalk in front of their restaurant for outdoor seating and dining and for other entertainment purposes. They also wish to continue using the area under the canopy or very near the canopy for outdoor dancers and other entertainers. The dining area is enclosed with a three-foot-tall wrought iron fence. This is a separation requirement of both our town code and the state liquor license. Previous issues related to ADA access have been addressed with the Engineering Division satisfactorily. The fence location meets ADA requirements for both inside and outside the fenced area, and concrete tire stops have been placed in front of the parking lot, in front of the parking spaces, to ensure that ADA access outside the fence isn't blocked by vehicle bumper overhangs. Issues regarding the building code and restroom access have been satisfactorily addressed with the Building Safety Division, and proof of indemnification insurance has been provided, and the restaurant agrees to ensure that after-hours cleanup is done promptly. Some complaints have been received by staff during the past three months, and those have been outlined in your staff report, and the applicant is present to address those if council wishes. Staff believes that activities such as these help generate activity and interest in the downtown area when properly conducted, and that this location is conducting their activities responsibly and in general compliance with their permit. So staff recommends approval of the encroachment permit extension, subject to the applicant satisfactorily addressing the complaints outlined in the staff report and an annual review and reapproval of the encroachment permit. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob. And again, before us, we have consideration of perhaps a permanent encroachment permit and extension premise license, are they both? You looking for both of those as suggested motions?
I don't believe they have to extend the extension of premise, it's just the encroachment permit at this time.
Okay.
And we would recommend that it's an annual review, but it could be permanent if council wishes.
All right, thank you, Bob. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Brown, I thought your pen was moving up there.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, special use permit stay with the property and not necessarily the owner?
Special use permits would, yes, this is actually an encroachment.
It's not the same.
No, this is not. It's a permit to, allows a private entity to use public property, basically.
But it doesn't stay with the property?
Well...
It stays with the owner.
No, it's relating specifically to this location.
But when the, if they were to move out of the restaurant, would the new owner have to come in and apply for the encroachment permit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Other questions? All right, Councilmember Cantino.
Bob, the thing I look at when I'm down there, and I've been talking to people when they're sitting inside, is that a lot of the baby carriages, double ones, can't get through, and also we've had some, I see where the dogs are down there, where people don't like to walk that way and they have to walk out on the street. Have we really looked into the federal ADA compliances on that?
My understanding is that both the Engineering Division and the Building Safety Division both assured us that the ADA compliance was there for both state and federal.
Okay, I guess the other thing would be is I love to have outside seating, and it's got a lot of advantages. I guess what I would be interested in trying to figure out how we could do it is to move that streetlight in about 18 inches so that we could have a full sidewalk going all the way straight down there, because it is kind of difficult trying to get, even a double baby carriage can't get through either side, and I think that we need to take a look at that for our citizens and our safety, of the citizens in Fountain Hills and for the other people that walk along there. I don't know if it can be done or not, but that would be my suggestion.
I'm not in charge of that, it would have to be a council decision in order for us to move that.
Bob, on those items, what are the items that the applicant needs to address other than reporting annually?
Well, the complaints that we received were, there was a dog tied to the outside of the fence, so it was blocking the access outside. During some of the events, sometimes the sidewalk was completely blocked by the crowds, and I believe that, I know the other incident was someone complained that the restaurant was actually plugging into the town's electrical supply, which was addressed in the previous permit that they were to stop doing that.
All right, so those are the items they need to address? Okay. All right, any other questions, Councilmember Elke?
This would be legal, Bob, if you can't answer it. Would, if Sephrida were to move out of there, the current owners were to move out of there, would that fence have to come down immediately?
Upon the permit being terminated, the fence would have to come down, yes, because it's encroaching into cities right away.
Would it then, would the permit terminate once if that business closed down or sold it to, or just moved, let's say, the owners moved out?
I would have to say my understanding is yes, it would, because it's issued to a particular business to use that property and encroach into the right of way. I haven't seen the permit, I would tell you that, but that's my understanding that it would. And on the other issue, Mayor, I think we do have, according to the staff report, both the encroachment permit and the extension of premises permit were only issued for three months. I think we would need to take a motion on both, according to the staff report.
The, if you, Mr. Benner, if you wouldn't mind looking at the agenda before you, and then just confirm that again, if you wouldn't mind.
The agenda just mentions the encroachment permit, the staff report indicates that it was only granted for three months back in October, so...
So we're okay to move on both of those?
That's one motion. Do you think?
Councilmember Dickie?
Mayor, on one motion, then, or two motions?
Mr. Benner?
We could do it on a combined motion.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the permanent encroachment permit for the Sephrida Restaurant located at 16848 East Avenue of the Fountains as presented, subject to the applicant addressing the requirements and conditions outlined in the Building Safety Division and Engineering Division review reports to the town satisfaction, as well as satisfying the Department of Justice ADA access requirements, and move to approve the extension of premises license for the Sephrida Restaurant located at 16848 East Avenue of the Fountains as presented, subject to the applicant addressing the requirements and conditions outlined in the Building Safety Division and Engineering Division review reports to the town satisfaction, as well as satisfying DOJ ADA access requirements.
All right, thank you, motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second on the motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Was that for the permanent encroachment? Mayor, Bob, you said in your recommendation that it was based on them dealing with the complaints that had been received, and it seems like we're maybe a little premature in moving ahead... Mayor, Bob, you said in your recommendation that it was based on them dealing with the complaints that had been received. And it seems like we're maybe a little premature in, in moving ahead without knowing how those issues are going to be remedied.
They are present, if you wish to ask them.
I mean, because some of these are going to be difficult to deal with, actually. And it just seems like we need an idea of how it can be dealt with.
Councilor, Vice Mayor?
I have a question about that. So the, but the complaints, are those the stipulations? Are they, is that part of the stipulation that they have to address what those complaints were?
To the council's satisfaction, yes.
Yeah, because it says, "Subject to the applicant satisfactorily addressing the above noted complaints."
So it could be back before us if it, if that's not, does not occur. If we receive, if council receives or staff suggests we reconsider this because it's not working out or they're not being addressed, I would suspect.
Or perhaps maybe tabling this, well, no, we wouldn't do that. We would extend it, since this expires at the end of January, maybe extend it to the end of February to allow the applicant to come back and say, "This is how we're going to address these," so that we could consider it at that time.
What'd you say, Councilmember Elke?
Mayor, thank you. The applicant is here. I would like to hear from the applicant what, what her plan is to address these.
Good. Ms. Redendo, are you available to come forward? Thank you. Are you familiar with the staff report and the items that were listed?
Yes. As far as for the people standing in the parking lot, the crowd, I think it was during our ribbon cutting. So I think that was the one that, so that normally wouldn't happen. During that ribbon cutting, we did have large numbers, but it was more of a grand opening type of event. And the one with the pet, I don't recall, because usually we would specify that they couldn't tie the dog up to the fence like that. So I don't recall, you know, a pet being tied outside. But we have talked to our staff about how, how we would deal with pets, if pets do come by. But we usually don't get that many. And I don't recall a pet being tied to the outside of the exterior of the fence. And there was one, is that?
It was access around the dancers has occasionally been blocked by spectators.
Yeah, I think probably that one was probably the ribbon cutting is the only one that I kind of recall. Because we do sometimes get people that sit at those tables, like at the benches underneath the Ramada, but usually you're able to walk through. But during the ribbon cutting, it was a larger amount of numbers than we usually see. But when spectators, usually either they'll sit on, in the benches, or they bring their own chairs, too. And they kind of sit in the courtyard.
And then, "The clear path between the fence and the curb while meeting ADA requirements is narrow and has caused inconveniences to more than one passerby." And that's a tough one to try and remedy. I mean, it would only be by moving the fence, so I don't know how this would be able to be met.
The clear path portion, I think, is, you know, your efforts to ensure things like the pets are not there, or, you know, people at the restaurant are not outside of the fence for a period of time. That's what I would read into that.
Yeah, on the most part, usually the passageway is not blocked unless, the only times I could recall, maybe during the fair, you know, when there was just larger numbers and then the tents were in the front there. During our events, usually, you know, there's crowds coming in and they see, but we don't have, unless there's a group of people leaving at that time from the restaurant, like a group of six or eight that are leaving. But on the most part, I mean, two people can walk through. We did put the bumpers that kind of don't, that permit, kind of prevent the cars from parking too far in. So that, I believe, has helped on that part. And the stroller, I think, can go through unless it's like a twin, probably a twin stroller, maybe not, like the wide ones for twins.
And then the last one was, "The restaurant has access to the electrical outlets located in the right of way rather than providing their own electric connection."
Yeah, that, I addressed that with the, the group that was performing. I didn't realize that they were putting in their own plugs on that, too. Because we put the, we give them electricity, but they were putting their own in. So I addressed that with the group. So now they're aware of that.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more thing for Bob?
Yeah.
Bob?
Thanks, Carolyn.
Okay.
In your, some of your last comments, you said that staff was recommending still annual review, so it wouldn't be a permanent encroachment permit. It would be subject to annual review?
There would be a recommendation.
Maybe we could make that amendment if that's necessary. Councilmember Elke?
Some of the things, there's going to be complaints. You do one thing, you're going to have half the people complaining. You do one thing, the other half are going to be complaining. It sounds to me like Ms. Redendo has addressed the issues. I did see the dancers, I think it was one of the first or second nights that the flamenco dancers were out there. And I did see, there were a lot of spectators that were watching in that area, and I could see there being some concern. But I think you just got to kind of address it on, on an as-needed basis. Bob, if I could, just ask you a quick question. No, sit back down, so I can call you right back. Like a jack-in-the-box. Since, well, just say in the past six months, how many complaints has the town received relative to this in total?
I listed them in the staff report, there's four or five.
Okay. I think that's fairly negligible. Certainly, we need to make sure that we're in compliance with ADA requirements. It sounds like we are. We can't really require Sepfita or the owners to do anything as far as the clear path. Certainly make sure that dogs aren't tied up outside the fence and that it's not blocked when they have dancers out there. If there's complaints, confident that staff are going to address those complaints with the owners, and the owners are going to take action to remedy this, because obviously the permit would be in jeopardy if there was a chronic problem there. But four complaints doesn't sound like a chronic problem. I don't think we need to micromanage this.
Thank you. I think Kathy had mentioned the, the annual review and permanent nature of the, of the permit. I feel that there's, those, the subject twos are in here. So if, if it becomes an issue, we'd obviously be able to talk about it some more. So we may be covered there. Permanent, the encroachment permit's permanent as long as those items are not things that we need to readdress again.
That was kind of like A-frames.
Could be.
Having to renew them every year.
Yeah, I'd rather not. I'd rather move forward and, but in having an issue, as, as Redendo mentioned, with, when those issues have come up have been, when it's been very busy over there, and you almost half want to have problems at times, because you want things to be busy. But it's certainly responsibility of the applicant to ensure that we have access along our sidewalks. We are giving up part of our sidewalk here because it's in alignment with our downtown vision plan and numerous other things, along with being business-friendly and supportive and, and all the things that we strive to do here. So I would say it looks like we're in good shape. I like the motion, and I'm comfortable with the way it's been going. And I know that the, the permit, the person giving the permit is, is a responsible business owner that wants to take care of the community and, and live by the, their responsibilities as well. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. When you brought the signs, you reminded me of something. The year review part of it isn't actually being stated right now. Is it, does it need to be? Because if we do the, take the, well, I'm, I'm not myself, I think, I think this is fine the way it is, but we did talk about the 207 implication with the signs. So if there's any kind of a reason to go back and do this, I don't want to be facing something that we're taking value away from the property. So I guess I'll look to you, David, to say, do we need to explicitly say that about it being reviewed?
Well, if you wanted to have that absolute opportunity to come review it every year and make a decision on whether it still makes sense to continue it, you would want to structure it that way. The way that is now structured in the motion, the council certainly and the staff would have the ability to enforce the terms under which it was granted. But that doesn't mean that everything is spelled out in the terms that you may someday feel like you'd want to review.
Well, Mayor, I'm, I think I'm okay with the way, the way you just put that. Basically, there are stipulations there, but I just wanted to...
If anything came about later, I'm, excuse me, Vice Mayor, if anything came about later where it was felt that the stipulations under which it was granted were not being followed, it could certainly be brought back at that point for appropriate action to enforce.
Okay, thank you.
Good, so we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Cantino?
Now, are we talking about going for two months on this again, or are you talking about doing it permanently?
Permanently with the stipulations that could be brought before us if they're not.
Okay, I guess that being on that avenue six to eight times a day, I see a lot of stuff. I love what's happening, I love the outdoors, but I still think we've got some big concerns about traffic coming up and down that sidewalk. And when I can see our citizens walking out in the street endangering themselves, I can't go along with everything, because I don't think we've seen this thing all the way straight through. I think that we have to be out there taking a look at it, like I have, and when citizens come to me and stop me and say, "Why? I couldn't even walk down there." I have to sit back and say, "I got to go back to Mr. Rogers and, and say, 'Go to his neighborhood and talk to him.'" But it's, it's a situation that I'm not comfortable with, and I think we need to address it. I don't think we need to rush into this and keep saying it's going to be a permanent, permanent deal. So if we're going to a permanent deal, I won't be able to go along with it.
The item three, the stipulation is to ensure that there's a clear path between the fence and the curb to meet ADA.
Well, I can go along with that, but I've been there when you can't get through. So if I have to stop and talk to somebody, there's only one little path to go through, and if I got a baby carriage and somebody else there, they can't go through.
So are you looking to have a wider?
That's what I'm saying about having that street light moved over into the property end of it, so we can have a straight line go through, so we could have a wider path. Right now, we got a blocked path. Nobody realizes that unless you're sitting in a handicapped scooter.
I thought that...
Or a double carriage.
I thought it sounded similar to that when I was there the other day. It might be better for us to consider looking at that light and moving that light, because that's where the choke point, kind of, that's where it gets a little bit smaller, or you have to make a little bend.
Right.
It's still compliant, but appreciate it. So we do have the clear path, to ensure the clear path is there. So if that's not the case going forward, we can always readdress it. But I can appreciate what you're saying. Anything else, council, before we vote on the motion? And no, no one from the public on this item, correct?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor, indicate a aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Mayor 6-1?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Redendo, thank you, Bob. All right, item four, consideration of possible direction of staff relating to the Community Center Code of Conduct. Mark, thanks for filling in from interim manager Getty.
Thank you, appreciate it. You may recall a couple of weeks ago, I brought forward with you a proposal from the town staff, having to do with the ability to control, or better control, some of the behavior that we've seen at the community center. The staff had worked to provide information from a variety of other locations, municipalities, took that information, took what we thought was the best of that information, and proposed it in this particular document. It's now, as I indicated to you, originally been reviewed by the Community Center Advisory Commission, by the Senior Services Advisory Commission, and finally, since we discussed this the last time, by the Town Attorney's Office. So the document that you see before you has passed all three of those groups. So we're back tonight to basically ask for your support of a document that we feel is going to give the control that's needed to the staff. I will also tell you that since we brought this forward to you, we have had another incident from a repeat offender, and that's one of the reasons that we specifically think this document is important. So we have a similar document for recreation programs and for outdoor activities. We think this is needed to provide the staff some additional support and patrons at the facility as well. So with that, I would gladly answer any questions. We are recommending the adoption of the Code of Conduct, or if there's any additional consideration you would like us to make, we certainly would look at that as well.
All right, thank you, Mark. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, council, any questions? Yep, Councilmember Elke?
Mark, just, it's unfortunate that we have to have something like this written that folks won't behave, but I understand your need for this. The one question I have is in the final paragraph, where it says, "The community services director or designee is authorized to take all necessary steps to enforce, enforce this Code of Conduct." And then, "In addition, failure to comply with the Code of Conduct may result in a suspension and/or revocation of your center privileges and forfeiture of paid fees." If you have a situation that arises where someone's privileges at the community center are revoked, presumably you or your designee making that decision, what is the remedy if somebody wanted to appeal that? I mean, would staff anticipate that if somebody wanted, they disagreed with your assessment or your designee's assessment? Where would we go from there?
I think the, the normal appeal process for any decision that's made at the staff level would be following the organizational chart up to the, the town manager in this case, and ultimately, if the person so chose, to the council itself.
Might be after the fact, might be more of a complaint, I would suspect, if it's, you know, an evening event, and, because certainly here it's clear that you, if you're in that role at that time, you're, you can take those necessary steps with you being in that role. So this is an item that staff feels they need to have that support in order to make the decisions, so that people that are acting unruly can be clearly shown a Code of Conduct and then asked to leave, so that the others enjoying the community center and the staff can operate the way they see fit.
Mayor Schlem, that's probably our biggest issue now, is that we have some, a repeat offender who is making it difficult for others who are patrons of the facility and on an ongoing basis. So this has occurred now several times. We don't have the current authority to, we can request that person to leave, but we don't have the authority to, to make that person leave. And this would allow us to do that.
Okay. Councilmember Legay?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, thanks for presenting this to us. Just, just a few clarifying questions. You speak of revocation, is there a time period on that?
We left it open because we wanted some latitude, depending on the severity of the, maybe a repeat offender, maybe there's been a previous expulsion from the building. So we want to take those factors into consideration, not have something that's, that's kind of predisposed and has to fit everyone. We wanted to be as flexible as we could be.
Okay, thanks for that. When I read the, as written, it almost implies it's permanent.
That certainly wasn't the intent.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we want to clarify some of that language. And my second question is, my concern is that someone may become belligerent, and I don't want to put staff in that compromising situation. I've worked in facilities in the past where that has been the case. How will that be dealt with?
The same as if we have any kind of what we consider to be emergency situation, where we would call the MCSO officer to respond.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how to potentially amend, and probably not advisable to try to change too much while we're talking about it up here tonight, related to the, a time period. It seems pretty open to where, it could be read both ways, but it also reads to where perhaps, once the use or the conduct is different, you could be allowed back in. So you could read it in, read it both ways, which is perhaps the best way to, to have it written. Councilmember Elke?
I think what Mark had stated earlier, as far as the appeal process and following the organizational chart, and then ultimately coming to the council, I think, hopefully you wouldn't have, it sounds like it's one, maybe two individuals that are causing this, so we're probably never going to address it. But if, if necessary, if it does become an issue, it's always something that can be brought before the council. So I'd be comfortable with it as, as it's written now, knowing that the individual would have that ability to come before the council ultimately to appeal if it was a permanent revocation of their rights to use the community center. And I would hope we would never come to that, but, you know, I certainly trust staff to make the right decision and that, but also appreciate the fact that they would have the ability to come before us ultimately, or whatever council at that time.
Councilmember Legay?
I'm comfortable with that as well. I just want a clarification on the policy, that it wasn't implied that it was permanent. So I, I'm fine with that, thank you.
Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, I'll go along with that. And I like the idea that MCSO is going to be involved in it if it comes down to having it done, and I hope we never have to come to the council.
Joan, we haven't had a motion on this yet, have we? Bev, did I say Joan?
Yeah.
Bev, sorry about that, where that came from. No motion yet?
No.
Bev, okay.
Mayor?
Would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve the Code of Conduct policy.
All right, any other discussion? No one from the public, correct?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor, indicate a aye. Aye, opposed? Aye, opposed?
Mayor seven-zero.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, item five, update by the greening of downtown, Chair Jerry Butler, and consideration proposed phase five project in Fountain Park.
Just a quick comment if I could, Mayor. Has been the practice now while he sets up his PowerPoint. Mr. Butler rightly is the chair of the downtown greening committee, has periodically come back to the council and updated you on previous phases, as well as phases that are in the future. That's his goal tonight. He's also joined by two people that are working on their Eagle Scout certification through local troops. Those are the letters that were placed on your, on the dius this evening for you. They will also be speaking, I believe briefly, about their involvement in this particular project. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Butler.
Welcome, Jerry, how are you?
I'm great, and how about you?
I'm glad you're still fired up for this. Good to see you, thanks for being here.
Mayor, council members, we're glad to be back to give you an update on the greening of downtown, and also tell you what we would like to do in phase five. Just very briefly, if you recall, in the beginning, the greening of downtown was one of the catalysts associated with the downtown vision plan. And at that time, we had no money, no staff, and it was simply a big dream. Well, we've accomplished a lot of things in the project, and tonight, what we want to do is to tell you what we have accomplished to date. We also want to talk to you about the Performance Pad landscaping project, and the Boy Scout who is going to lead this effort as a part of his Eagle Scout program, and I have agreed to be their advisor. So Chris Veronese is going to do the Performance Pad, and Peter Corillo will do the Cactus Garden project, subject to your approval of both projects. Our project, our activities began two years ago, and we now have thirty-five people serving on an all-volunteer committee, plus two now, with these two Boy Scouts. We've raised a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in private donations and in-kind services, and in Fountain Park, we have added now a hundred and thirty-four trees, and I'm proud to say as a part of the centennial, the one-hundred, there are now one-hundred trees that will add shade to the interior sidewalk of Fountain Park. We've had it, put a low-water demonstration garden in at the south end of the park with signs to help the public understand what plants work and the low-water ordinance requirements of the town. We also have a wildflower garden. We've improved two islands, added three commemorative columns, and had already started what I'll call phase one of the Performance Pad landscaping. The hundred and thirty-four trees are shown in this slide. Some of them are at the Performance Pad, that was phase one, and recently, this past week, we just completed forty more trees in the park. We're proud to say that in 2011, the Arizona Community Tree Council awarded the town award for adding the trees to the park. The two gardens, one absolutely eliminated what I think was an eyesore in the park, the low-water demonstration garden, and these are no longer, are not a burden to the town staff, as they are, the low-water garden is being maintained by the volunteer master gardeners, and also then the wildflower garden is being handled by the Botanical Garden Club. Typical with everything that we've accomplished in the park, these two projects were made possible by a large group of volunteers. The two island projects, one is at the south end of the park that was accomplished last year, along with the one on the east side of the, or, excuse me, on the west side of the park. We have one more to go. The three commemorative columns are shown in this slide, and this year, we've added pavers and landscaping to the perform, or to the commemorative column area. The Performance Pad landscaping that I spoke of now includes fourteen donated planters with plants in each one of them, along with an area of landscaping south of the Performance Pad, between the sidewalk and the lake. And the reason these projects were put in and approved some by the Park and Recreation Commission is to add enhancements or value beauty to the Performance Pad, because we also found out that it's an attraction now for weddings, and weddings are big business in Fountain Hills. So having a more beautiful surrounding is helping in that endeavor. So tonight, what we'd like to do is to tell you what we plan to do in phase five, and to address that will be for the Performance Pad landscaping project, and I'd like to have Chris come up and tell you what's actually going to be involved in phase two of the Performance Pad. Chris?
Welcome, Chris, and thanks for being a part of this.
Welcome, it's a pleasure. For phase two, we would be adding sixty plants, a little bit more than sixty plants, some crushed granite boulders and river rock in between the lake and the sidewalk, in between both of the drainage areas. This would be adding on to the previous Performance Pad landscaping, which you can see behind. The timeline is first we have to remove the sod from the area, we have to modify the irrigation with contractors, we have to place soil and shape it into mounds, we have to install boulders and place plants, spread granite over the plants, right next to the plants, and then we have to install river rock around the drainage areas, around the drainage pipes. And this would just make the place look a heck of a lot better. And are there any questions on the Performance Pad?
And maybe it's yourself or Jerry, the reason to add rock and remove sod in that area, what are the benefits to that, or that we're expecting? I know there's been issues with fertilizer running into the lake, and when having grass closer to the lake, you can have some of those issues, but what other benefits do you see from the improvements there, other than looking great?
Well, the grass would be much easier to cut for all people who cut the grass right around the rock, because they wouldn't have to try and get all in there and just make sure that the grass stays low. And for the grass, what-
I was wondering, the timeline for you, is it, you've got March twelfth through April twenty-seventh, is that the timeline, you're looking at having the project completed?
Yeah, working on weekends in between those two.
Okay. Yeah, are you busy with other things right now?
Not, not really.
No? Okay. Well, good, well, this is a great project, and I hope that you're successful in gaining your Eagle Scout, and we're successful in having a great improvement that you can come back and continue to look on. So this is terrific. Any other questions, council, for Chris?
Chris, I appreciate you taking this project on, you're certainly assisting the town, and matching yourself with Jerry, I think you're gonna do great things, and I want to express our appreciation to you and your Boy Scout troop came out and assisted with that Veterans Appreciation Day event. Some of you may remember, Chris was actually the one that led us in the Pledge of Allegiance that day, so thank you very much, Chris.
Welcome.
Excellent, Chris, appreciate that. Welcome, Pete, how are you doing?
Good. I'm here to talk about the cactus garden that we're going to implement. It's going to be the east side of the park, the east parking area. As you can see from this image, it's really nothing more than dirt and scrub, and what we're gonna do is put in cactus, and here is a design that we had our landscaper Cynthia Wolf draw up for us, and we'll be implementing many different Sonoran Desert cacti, like choya, and different types of choya, prickly pear, and organ pipe cactus, and many other cactuses. The first part will be, we'll have to get a contractor to remove about two inches of excess dirt and waste, because there's some other, like weeds and different things, and to ensure that it'll be able to grow, and also because the dirt is very hard. So we'll be able to remove that, so there'll be a length between the curbs, and then we'll be able to put in dirt, soil mounds, to provide good soil for it to grow in. But before that, we'll be having a contractor come in and install irrigation. We're gonna need that half to happen, because you can't install it with just shovels and pickaxes even, because it's caliche, which is a very hard dirt, that you'll need contractor tools to dig out and excavate, so you can put in, and they'll put in the irrigation, the wastewater irrigation. So then, we're gonna do the mounds, as I previously talked about, and we'll order the soil and dump it, and then we'll be placing the cacti and different plants within these mounds, and we will purchase them from different botanical gardens. We also have different sources with master gardeners and different contacts that will help us to ensure the best prices and best cacti. And then, when it's all said and done, we'll be putting in a layer of granite to make it look nice and add landscaping to it. Yeah, that's it.
Very good. Any questions? Yeah, thank you, Pete. Any questions, council? Councilmember Hanson?
Just a comment, thank you so much, because that has been an eyesore for so long. People are commonly, you know, they'll say, "Why doesn't anything grow there?" You know, "Is there no irrigation to it?" So that'll be a huge improvement.
Great, and it looks like it'd be similar to the other desert garden area that's closer to the playground, the walking area between it, so.
Yes, that's part of the inspiration. We might also make signage, kind of like at the other place-
Good.
-for a learning experience, and we'll add a-
I don't see any choya on there, jumping choya.
No jumping choya, but further developments will be meandering paths. That will probably be later, and then also granite boulders, if they're within the budget. The meandering path will be after, there's apparently plans for the parking lots to be redone or repaved, so it'll be after that, and hopefully wheelchair accessible, so. That probably won't be part of my project initially, but for improvements.
Not by April twenty-seventh anyways, right?
Yes, and we're picking that window similarly because of Chris, like how, the reasons he brought up, weekends are great for getting other students and other people to help, and also, I won't have much time other than the weekend. So we'll also be working through spring break, or some days in spring break, because those are good weekdays to work on.
Are you busier than Chris right now?
Yeah, I'm currently wrestling. I have to wake up tomorrow.
Chris can help on your project a little bit, given Chris. Well, great, Pete, any questions? Councilmember Legay.
Pete and Chris, thanks for stepping up on this project, and nice presentation. You know, you guys are so poised in coming up here and presenting, and I recall when I was your age, man, I was just not sure I could have done that, so good work. I'm sure scouting has really helped develop you folks into just the young men that you are, so thanks for volunteering, and just don't get pricked by any of those cactus down there.
How is it to work with Jerry? No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, scouts. Troop three forty-three is representing very well tonight, so good job to the troop.
Well, these young men are going to learn things that some of us have learned in life, that is how to take a project from conception, find the contractors, find the volunteers, find all of the materials, and make it happen within a period of about two months. So they do have their work cut out for them, but we also have the success of the low-water garden as an example of what can be done, and we'll follow that in these two other enhancement projects. So in addition to what we talked about in the planning stage, we have, we're looking at the north side of the lake, the enhancing the duck island up there, this, maybe next, actually, it might be next fall. We may not be able to get it in before the birds start to build their nests over there on the island, so we understand it might be better to do it sometime after next August. So that's still to come. We'd like to add more trees, but that's gonna be totally dependent on donations or grants. The downtown quarter, while we have added and enhanced three vacant lots along the avenue of the fountain with trees and landscaping, we need to find new partners and additional financial support to continue the ideas throughout the downtown area. And also, as you know, we have an urban demonstration garden and learning center that is being organized right now. Business plan is being developed, and you'll hear more about it in future months. But tonight, what we're really here to talk about would be the extension of the Performance Pad landscaping, which was part of an overall master plan over a year ago, but the new program that has not been introduced until tonight is adding the cactus garden to the vacant property east of the east parking lot, between the parking lot and the street. And as Peter said, the idea would be to eventually have a wandering path through there that would be accessible, handicap accessible. Right now, though, the east parking lot does not have any handicap access to that area. So the, our understanding is someday, when that parking lot is improved, then there would be ramps put in, and handicap accessibility would be made to the area, and at that time would be the time to put in the wandering path, along with the signs, so that people could identify the cactus that they might want to plant in their yard. So tonight, what we're asking for basically is your approval to proceed with the cactus garden program. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for Jerry on phase five? Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, Councilmember Cantino, or Councilmember Brown?
I'd like to make a motion to approve phase five of the green downtown project in Fountain Park to include the cactus garden.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Councilmember Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Jerry, I'm sorry I don't know this, but when you say you're reaching out to other partners and looking for grants, do you, are you going outside of town to any organizations or anybody that might be interested in projects like this?
Yes, we are. We have a gentleman on our volunteer committee who is now looking and reaching out to large corporations, national corporations, and so we're exploring those right now as for grant opportunities. We were recently, unfortunately, found out through another grant application that we applied with the state forestry division, that this year Fountain Hills was not gonna be a recipient. So that was a setback, but that just means we have to go someplace else, so yes, we are looking.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering on the, you know how they're, that some, not necessarily just businesses, but organizations that are looking to offset carbon footprints and all of those terms, and that they can actually get credit for doing things like this, so I just, maybe I'll talk to you a little bit about that, but there might be some opportunities there.
We'd love to have you on our committee.
Centennial first.
All right, any other comments, Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, I want to thank Jerry for, and all the people that work with you for what you've done in the park. I really like what you've done on the avenue on the north side to get rid of that eyesore on those three lots. Going down there every day, it makes you have a good feeling when you have that landscaped all the way straight through there, and I want to commend you for that.
Thank you very much, and we also refer to that as a demonstration project. That just demonstrates what could be done on the other lots, as long as we can find the money.
And great support from the water company here, too, on that.
Yes, we did. Water company is supporting us on that project, as well as the Platte two oh eight Property Owners Association.
That's great. That's necessary and important.
And that's what I mean about extending the cooperation, the volunteerism associated with this program. It just keeps going, so we're fortunate.
Yes, thanks again, Jerry. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor indicate a saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor seven-zero.
All right, keep up the great work, thank you very much. No pressure, scouts, no pressure. All right, item six, consideration with possible direction to the town attorney regarding negotiation of a town manager contract. I'll make a motion to direct town attorney to proceed with negotiations toward reaching an employment agreement with a potential town manager candidate, as discussed in executive session. Do I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anyone from the public on this item?
Yes, Mayor Lee, static?
Yes, Mayor Lee Stadig.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I was grateful for the opportunity to meet the two last two prospective finalists for the position of town manager. As an observer of the town manager forum this week, it was easy to see from his responses and presentation that Mr. David Andrews was the superior candidate. He has financial experience, charisma, and a better vision of projects suitable to our community. His direct look you're in the eye attitude was refreshing. He seemed to be a very much a people person, unlike Mr. Buchanan, who appeared rather provincial. Mr. Andrews' response to working with the divided council was honest and intelligently viable, but I fear some members might be leaning towards somebody with more manipulability. I heard from unbiased sources that in fact the evaluation did not come out evenly, and the majority of attendees apparently were impressed by Mr. Andrews. It would seem once again that council members might not be acting in the best interest of the majority, though I admit 60 attendees is only a percentage. In considering Mr. Buchanan, by whose own admission has the lesser financial experience, this council, I hope, will not once again act in opposition to the voice of the constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that it? All right. Council, get a motion and a second? All in favor indicate saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Thank you. Item number seven, quarterly update on the progress of implementing town council goals for fiscal year 2012. Mark?
Mayor Sloman, and members of the council, I don't really have anything specific to add, just that each of the departments has had an opportunity to review the document, update the document, especially when it comes to the information associated with the progress on council's goals. Some of the goals I might mention, such as the one that perhaps I'm most biased towards, the recreation opportunities and amenities, we're listing it's 80% complete, because some of the goals that are listed under that are going to need some additional funds for fully implementation. So with that, I would endeavor to answer any questions that you might have. There are also a few staff members here that might be able to be more specific in their particular areas. So with that, if there are any questions?
I appreciate it, Mark, good report, and just for the public, it is out there in our packet as well, if you want to review it. It speaks to the strategic plan, the values, and the staff's progress, council's progress on attaining those, so thank you. Any questions, staff, on these? Great. Item number eight, council discussion direction interim town manager, actually, Mark Mayor tonight?
I really don't have anything to add. I was informed after missing the first two days this week with flu-like symptoms, I had a short discussion with Julie Getty at about nine o'clock last night and was informed of her particular family situation, so we didn't necessarily have a whole lot of time to talk. So I really don't have anything to add.
Thank you, Mark.
Somewhat better, yes.
Yeah, well, thanks for being here. Number nine, summary of council requests and report on any recent activity, as far as moving forward, just on what we talked about tonight.
Correct.
All right. Look for a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
All in favor indicate saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, have a great night.